Before I introduce our last speaker, I just wanted to, last speaker on this topic, I just wanted to mention, it only occurred to me that this morning, that the Army has engineered a total victory this morning, that all three of our speakers are from the U.S. Army, which is great for the Army. But I do want to mention, as someone who's been involved in many of these programs, that we offer many programs and services that include the Navy, the Marine Corps, and the Air Force. So if any of you are involved in any of those services, we have not left them behind. The Army must have been working behind the scenes and, as I said, engineered total victory this morning. So our final speaker, and this speaker will, we live speaker and out on videotape, is Jim Campbell. Lieutenant General Jim Campbell, U.S. Army, retired, is a 1971 graduate of the University of Missouri, and was commissioned through the Army ROTC program there. He also holds a Master of Science from the University of Illinois, and a Master of Arts in National Security and Strategic Studies from the U.S. Naval War College. General Campbell served over 36 years in the Army, leading soldiers in war and in peace. He commanded the United Nations Quick Reaction Force in Somalia, led a multinational staff in Haiti, served as the commander of the Joint Task Force Full Accounting, with the mission to account for those missing from the Vietnam conflict, commanded a multinational division in Bosnia to enforce the Dayton Peace Accords, and served as the commanding general of all Army forces in the Pacific. It's a pretty big job. In his final assignment, he served as the Director of the Army Staff in the Pentagon, responsible for coordinating and synchronizing the day-to-day efforts of a million-person Army. He currently serves as a Senior Advisor to the Chief of Staff, Army, and assists in the development of the Army's General Officer. He has a passion for baseball and pulls for the Atlanta Braves. He and his wife Carol live in Alexandria, Virginia, with their golden retriever, I love this name, Glory. Jim says that the most significant award he received as a soldier was the opportunity to serve his country. Please join me in giving a very warm Carolina welcome to Lieutenant General Jim Campbell. Well, based on looking at those two videos, I think I'd rather be sitting watching me up there. Wow, that was very impressive. Nice going. As you heard, my name is Jim Campbell, and I had the honor to serve my country as a soldier for nearly 37 years. And it is an honor for me to be here this morning with you. Having read each of your bios, I know the stand you take on education. And with the palm of your hands, of the future of our country, as evidenced by that student body president sitting with you this morning, thank you for all you do. I am, as you heard, a huge baseball fan. And I will share with you that I am in the midst, actually the very tail end, of a 30-day course for 10 General Officers in Carlisle, Berks, Pennsylvania. I drove out of Carlisle yesterday, arrived last night, will complete this morning, get my car and drive right back, because I have to close that tomorrow. And I shared this with a couple of the General Officers, and they said, "You gotta better your mind." So why don't you videotape it? And here's why: You count. Keenan Flagler, University of North Carolina, count to the United States Army. And how could I do anything less than be here with you? My last job in the Army was, as you heard, the Director of the Army Staff, which is a sporty proposition. It's a busy job. And I occupied an office on the E-ring of the Pentagon. And when I walked out of there in 2008, I said, "That's it. That's the last time I'll ever come in this Pentagon." Well, never say never, because I have an office now on the E-ring of the Pentagon. The neat part about that is that to get to my office, if you've ever been in the Pentagon, there's these enormous corridors that lead you through the rings of the Pentagon. And to get to my office, you go through Corridor 6, which has these magnificent portraits of our former Chiefs of Staff of the Army. It's like walking with legends as you walk by. Now, I'm obviously showing my age, but I've had the honor to serve with many of those men on one side of the wall. And I have intentionally avoided making comments as I walk by, and tour groups stop at a portrait and say something about the person, because I just don't want to do that. So I resist the temptation. Well, it's a couple weeks back, I'm walking by, and two ladies are looking at a portrait of one of our very, very distinguished chiefs, who I know very personally. And one of the ladies said out loud, so I could hear, "I wonder if he was a nice man." So I couldn't resist. I stopped, and I said, "You know what? He was a prince. He was a gentleman." She says, "Oh, did you serve with him?" I said, "I did." The other lady looks across the hall at the portrait of Douglas MacArthur, and she says to me, "Did you serve with Douglas MacArthur?" And I thought she was kidding, but then I said, "Oh, my gosh, she's serious." So not to embarrass her, I said, "Well, our paths never crossed." But I sure am glad our paths are crossing this morning. Since May of 2013, I have served our Chief, General Odie Erno, as a Senior Advisor with a focus on the development of our General Officers. In that capacity, I have responsibility for their training, of which I will talk in more detail in a moment, the course that is conducted here with Keenan Flagler at UNC. I have responsibility for their mentorship, for their assessment, and the Chief has given me, talk about winning the lottery, he has given me the go to talk to as many General Officers as I can, all non-attribution, to hear from them on how we can do a better job building our strategic leaders. The Chief's number-one priority is leader development. He personally orchestrates the suite of courses that are, fall under the title Army Strategic Leader Development Program. There is a basic course, which is for brand-new brigadier generals and their spouses, which is kind of their first blush at what it means to become a General Officer, and what is expected of them. The intermediate course, which I'll talk about in just one moment here at UNC, and advanced course where our General Officers go out to business, spending time with major corporations, hearing from their leadership on their vision and how they handle problems, and then a senior course when a man or woman is selected to become a three-star or a Lieutenant General. First thing I wanted to emphasize for you all is the relationship between Keenan Flagler, the University of North Carolina, and our Army. As you know, or you may not know, in February of 2008, General Casey, then our Chief, had as his focus the Army enterprise. How do you get your arms around something as mammoth as the United States Army? And he came here with the help of then-Jim Dean, to look at how we could educate our General Officers. I will tell you that relationship has flourished. With the help of Kirk Lawrence to my immediate rear, who is probably the most responsive professional with whom I've ever worked, we are able to stay step in step with the Army's desires. As I said, I'm a huge baseball fan. Arguably, the 1927 Yankees were the best baseball team ever to play. I will tell you, working with the faculty here is playing with the '27 Yankees. Not only do they know their business, and they're able to communicate it, but they care. And when they look into the eyes of those young General Officers and say, "Thank you," those General Officers get it. Finally, look at this facility, holy smokes, and the learning environment. You all set the standard. In terms of the Army Strategic Leader Development Course, the intermediate course taught here, it is about 20 to 25 General Officers who have been generals for about 12 to 18 months. What we're trying to do is give them a skill set as a strategic leader. Listen to this. I mentioned to you the course that I'm engaged with now, with these 10 General Officers. Among those 10 General Officers, they have had 30 combat tours. So the last decade of their lives, they have been hooking and jabbing. They have been fighting for our country in counterinsurgency warfare, but the Chief recognizes that is not enough, that they have to be broadened and expanded, because they are going to be the men and women who will lead our Army. That is what the course here at University of North Carolina starts to do. We look at strategic leadership and management, and how does that apply to their jobs? How do you become an adaptive and resilient change agent? Because they will have to be. We look at self-assessment. How do others view me? How am I doing my job? And then something hugely important that the Chief has personally directed, we look at what is called the consequences of power. When you become a senior leader, what are the pitfalls? And what can you do to gird yourself and prevent that from happening to you and those around you? The impact on the Army has been profound. I believe 540 General Officers have gone through the course here at UNC, to include the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs, General Dempsey, and General John Campbell, who is currently in charge of all our forces in Afghanistan. Almost every Lieutenant General in our Army has been touched by this institution, faculty and course. In terms of the impact on the Army enterprise, it not only gives these General Officers an appreciation for a business, an enterprise, that is the United States Army, but it gives them the techniques and tools to successfully operate. I was at a dinner a few years back as an active General Officer, and the Speaker that night was my dinner partner. And as he sat down after he delivered his remarks, he says, "You know what? I hope you Army guys never outsource your minds." It's pretty profound. Because if you look at the daunting challenges today facing our Army in terms of reduced budgets, which means reduced manpower, while the world continues to spin and demand, you say, "What is it they cannot take from us? It is our minds." And this course, Keenan Flagler and UNC contribute to that. I'd like to close real quick, Chancellor, if I could, with a short story. And I think it's applicable to all of us in the room today. About two months back in the Pentagon, I got up and started down the corridor, and as would be the case, here came a young, non-commissioned officer, Sergeant E. Five, coming right towards me, and then we were going to hit the corridor and walk down together. And she did exactly what I hear a lot in the Pentagon. People walk by my office and say, "I cannot believe the week's not over. I can't believe it's not Friday," wishing their lives away. Well, this young NCO was a few steps in front of me, and she kind of says out loud, to know it in particular, "I can't believe it's only Wednesday. God, it's not even over the hump day. Come on." And so I couldn't resist. And I said, "Look." I said, "I know that's the way you look at it, but I look at it entirely differently." I said, "I know it's because where I am in life, but I honestly ask myself every night, did I do everything I could today to make a difference?" She kind of rolled her eyes and kept walking. And wouldn't you know it, that afternoon, we bumped into each other again, only this time, she's coming towards me, and she makes eye contact, and you can see in her face, "Oh, my gosh. Here comes, here comes Father Time." And so I decided, "Yeah, I better pick things up a bit, because last time it was pretty, pretty bad." So I smiled, and I'm not a big smiler. I grin a lot, but I don't smile. But I smiled, and I said, "How you doing?" She said, "Fine, sir." I said, "Hey, I hope your week sure speeds up." And without missing a beat, she says, "I hope yours slows down." And so my counsel to you all in your lives, and I know we all face challenges, but don't let it go by. Embrace every minute. You all are so very impressive in what you do, and I thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Jim, I think we have time for questions if people are willing. I was asking, yes, right. Sorry, I was meaning Jim Provost, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Didn't mean to be disrespectful. No, he'll call you up. I just was apologizing for saying the name Jim.
She calls me Jim, she's gonna call you Jim.
So any questions, our cadet and our general here this morning, or any more broader questions about what we do for the military here at UNC, on the board?
General, what, this has been going on for a while. What would you say are the key takeaways, the benefits that you've been able to see as a result of this type of executive education?
Clearly, it sticks. Two of the General Officers with whom I'm working now up at Carlisle are both graduates of the course here. And I would, I would bet, we have reflected on what they learned in this course often during that time. And as I encounter General Officers in the field, they always reflect back on this period because it broadened their thinking horizons. It's very easy, when you're captured by the events of the day, to stay in that, that lane. And what this course does, and what the faculty enables to do, is open those horizons and let these young men and women really think.
General, are there, thank you for your praise on it. Are there areas that the program or other areas where the university could be of further assistance and enhancements?
I think what we're doing right now, sir, and that is working very carefully with Kirk on any revisions or modifications. As the Chief Staff Army reviews the critique sheets, which are incredibly positive, there will be indications that they want things to shift. And as I said before, Kirk has been incredibly responsive to that. So I like very much the model we have now. I don't think anyone has said, "You know, we got it. We're solid. We're always looking for ways to improve it." Yes, ma'am.
General, I had the pleasure of, my daughter's boyfriend was a Special Forces, and had dealt with a lot of the issues that he was dealing with, and the university, and throughout the state. And there were issues and regulations within the state of North Carolina, which affected the military and given the number of bases we have, and the leadership programs that we're trying to provide as well. Are there things that we can do, not just, you know, on the campus, but perhaps within the state, and even at the legislature, to help promote the needs of the active and veterans?
You know, I'm not really, don't have the background to help you with what is peculiar to the state of North Carolina. I think what you heard from this young man, Jacob, says volumes about where he sees the need, and I think his recommendations were spot-on. The other point that I made, and I won't overstate this, but the attitude and the passion of the men and women who teach these General Officers is very, very important. And as I say, their sincerity comes through loud and clear, and that would be my biggest encouragement. You know, the buzz right now is, "Well, the Army's coming home, the Navy's coming home, everybody's coming home, it's over." And if you look at the pace at which these young men and women operate, it's incredible, what we're asking them to do. And the more that they know that their country is behind them, the better. Yes, ma'am.
Jim Dean, I've had an interest in the nursing program, and with the military and the bases that we have here, and there's just such a natural tie for these medics, and to come into our nursing program, especially and get into the graduate nursing program, and that's something that's growing, and I know Bill's tied into it. But with all of our ties to the military, and Bruce Cairns, and what Kevin Guskewitz is doing with the concussion studies for the military, not just the NFL, anything that we can do to keep these people in this state, productive in this state, after their military time is over, benefits the people of this state. I just hope we can find any resource to grow that program.
Well, thanks for that, Chuck. I do appreciate that. And as I said, the few programs that I talked about this morning are really just the tip of the iceberg in terms of what's going on here. There's other programs that are in the works that we're going to be announcing soon, that I think are very much along the lines of what you're asking for. I think you can get a sense of the commitment that the university has to the military in to make things, things better, and you're going to see, if you'll forgive me, a regular drumbeat, I think, over the next year or so of additional programs. One, just a point of clarification, to enlarge on the General's remarks. I mentioned briefly, and a little bit comically before, that while we had all Army today, we actually do provide services for, for the other branches. And the program that the Army is involved in now here at UNC, Keenan Flagler, actually started in about 2003 with the U.S. Navy, and began for the new, as they say in the Navy, the new flag officers. It was then expanded to include the U.S. Air Force after that, and I should say that the Marine Corps participated as part of the Navy program. Then it was expanded to include the U.S. Air Force. And then after that, because the Army had been so, so involved in conflicts around the world, they weren't able, when we started the program with the Navy, to devote the attention that it needed to, to development. But as things changed, a few years later, as the General said, around 2008, we began the relationship with the Army. And each one of these programs has evolved, so as the, as the world has evolved, as the need has evolved, so it's not as if we're offering, by any stretch of the imagination, the same program now that we were. In fact, rarely are two consecutive programs the same. And I think you can hear about the, from the General's comments, not only about our faculty, but about Kirk, who represents us, that we have a really close relationship with our, our customers and our clients, and so we're listening all the time. We have people in, in the Pentagon and in the field, and trying to understand, I mean, first just the language, and then what the needs are. And you don't want to put someone in the front of a class who only knows about business and doesn't know anything about the military, because they would say things that are really not that helpful. And I think one of the things we've heard from the admirals and the generals and the General Officers over the last 10 years or so, is that we have made a sincere effort to understand your world, and to try and bring what's useful from business into the military, and leave behind what's not so useful. So this is something I think that you, as the trustees of the university, can be enormously proud of. That was a longer answer than you wanted, but thank you.
And Jim, thank you. Thank you for what you've done.
Oh, well, it's an honor.
Jacob had addressed some pretty specific problems associated with veterans that are already here on campus. How are we addressing that?
Yeah, we're actively looking at, at that way, and thinking about what resources we can put in to continue to help them. You heard, I almost wish now that I had said what I said about the new programs after Jacob had spoken, because many of these things are really a response to exactly the kinds of things that he talked about. But, but there's clearly more to do. I think really, as a nation, and as a higher education system, and as this specific university, we are only now really completely realizing and coming to terms with the profound needs that these returning veterans have. And while I'm proud of what we've done, I think we have a long way to go. And, and I think it's, it's an illustration of, of the recognition that we have a long way to go, that we engaged Jacob. We knew he wasn't going to say, "Look, you've got it all right. Congratulations." We knew he was going to push for more, and that's fine, because we're with him on that. It's not any kind of antagonistic situation. You know, he's our guy, and we're trying to learn from him.
Jim, how many returning veterans do we have on campus?
Brian, how many returning veterans do we have?
That's a question I get asked regularly. That's not something that we've been able to have a good grasp on, honestly, other than the students that are using the I-Bill benefits to go to school. And at that, there are about 400, and it's a 50/50 split between veterans and dependents who are using their parents' benefits. So the GA has implemented some new reporting and tracking requirements, and so beginning this semester, we start to have a better understanding. So for example, they can make transfer students, all veterans who are undergraduates, transfer students. We have 27 who are either currently serving or had previously served of that cohort. So we're starting to get a better idea of exactly how many students we have.
Does that include graduate students as well?
That 27, no, that's non-graduate.
Can I just comment for a minute? And that is, from the private sector perspective, in our company, for example, diversity and inclusion, one of the key pillars of that is our Veterans Program. And I will say that certainly in the financial community in New York, there is a substantial amount of momentum to try and be as inclusive as possible, and provide opportunities in a number of different ways for returning veterans. And like any other diversity and inclusion program, it has obviously great pluses associated with it, and there's an awful lot more that the private sector can do. It would seem to me that the university can act as a real intermediary between veterans coming back, either going through programs as undergraduates or graduate students, or the specialized programs that you and the General have crafted for the General Officers, but also then working with the private sector to create opportunities for those returning veterans, ultimately, to be productive, responsible, contributing citizens going forward. I think the university is potentially in a very unique position. But I will say, we look at it the same way, with the same dedication we have for our gender diversity programs, our racial diversity programs, our sexual orientation programs, our Veterans Programs. We see it as a critically important part of our responsibility in the private sector to, in the end, as a business imperative, to ultimately access the largest pool of talent that we possibly can, but also to give back to this extraordinary group of individuals who have served their country, and where we can really help them get back into the private sector and make a real difference. But I think the university can play a really pivotal role here as an intermediary, making sure that all this stuff happens. So I, I would just say that I think we should try and figure out, how can we make, the resource requirement is not that great, but we should really focus on how we can do that.
Thanks, Peter. Great idea. Chuck?
Do you have a question?
I'd just like to add, this is one presentation at the university level, the entire system level, this is a real emphasis of the guide. It's something we've worked on for the last couple of years, three years. One thing we were able to do this year was actually get the legislation to provide in-state tuition for these veterans. And that is huge. That's a huge appeal, and trying to bring these people into workforce through the university system. So it's a major, major initiative at the university level. If I can mention one of the presentations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I have a question for both the General and for Cadet Stevenson. And this is the question, can you come on up? First of all, I just want to say, as usual, we find out students are much busier than we ever are going to be. So thank you for finding time to come here. You're just incredible. We're all very excited about the leadership, and I really want to ask both of you this question, because people sometimes debate whether you're born a leader, or whether you can learn to be one. And, and I'd just love to have you think a little bit about that. Are there things that you feel, because clearly you're moving into all these leadership positions, are there parts of what you've learned here that have given, have changed your opinion about yourself as a leader? Or how do you find you and your other students find those strengths within and nurture them?
Thank you for that question. I, actually, we debate that all the time in our program. We have our academic classes, where we sit and we talk about leadership traits, leadership qualities that we should have, and, and all of those types of things. And I think typically, some people think of a leader as someone who's very assertive, and who's kind of born, like, strong and tough, and, but I found that myself throughout high school, I was very shy, quiet, never really given the outlet to speak up a whole lot, other than just through small service. And coming to UNC, I thought the same thing. I thought, "Well, I'm not, I'm not born a leader." Like, I guess, like, how do I do this? I want to be in the Army, and I want to do really, like, important things, but how do I, how do I become a leader if I'm not born one? But then I started researching that question of, "Well, are you really born a leader?" Because what takes a leader is someone who can, you, you learn how to plan, you learn how to set goals, and then you take the people that you're leading, and you, you inspire them, and you motivate them towards that goal. And I don't think that you are born with the ability to motivate. I think you can create that ability. You can create that ability to get on a personal level with people, and then learn what motivates each individual person, and pushing them towards that common goal. And that's the biggest thing I've learned in, like, our leadership training, is that, plus leading by example. You don't, you're not born knowing how to lead by example. You, you learn that from other people who come before you, and then you learn to put your things in order, and, you know, prepare yourself first, and then have people watch you and follow you. So I don't think leadership is something you're born with. I think that there, if you, you get the right mentorship, you are coached how to effectively motivate and push people towards this common goal. And I, General, I think that one thing I've noticed, and one thing I've always been taught, is that people who are really good leaders are very personable people. They always speak to you with your first name, and they remember who you are, and I think that is critical, and how you, you know, you push people towards that common goal, is creating, is treating other people as humans and special people, so.
Thank you. General, do you have a comment?
There's no way I can top it.
Thank you.
Chancellor.
Thank you.
We have time for other questions. If not, thank you so much. General, thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Lauren, thank you.
And I'd just like to add that when I first came here, working with veterans and active service members, was actually something that was really important to me. It was another part of the draw to coming to this state. But I was so pleased when I got to meet Jim Dean, because we've already thanked him, but the truth is, his commitment was so deep and longstanding, and I think we've been so excited to find that this is shared by so many people. And I actually wanted to mention Laura Taylor, who came to be one of my fellows in the Chancellor's office this year, who is also a veteran. She graduated, mother of, of two, and one of the reasons that Laura came to work with me was to, again, help us move forward in lots of these areas. So we're just so, so pleased that this worked out today. We thank every We thank everybody for being here and really do appreciate this. And next year, we'll give you an update of all sorts of new and exciting ventures. So thanks, everybody.
I just want to thank Jim and our colleagues from ROTC and from the Army for the last hour. As a veteran of one of our former conflicts, I remember a time coming back when veterans were sort of encouraged or forced to sort of fly under the radar. And I think there was a good deal of loss of talent and some suffering from that, and I'm delighted to see that we may do it better this time. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.